And we can go directly to my district, right? Marina, I'm gonna ask you to lead us in pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. I'm sitting in tonight for trustee Martine. She had a personal childcare issue to take care of, so I'll be presiding tonight over the meeting. So we have some announcements from the closed session right now. Superintendent Geisels will start with our first announcement of her new principal.
So I'm very excited that in closed session before, we're going to approve the employment contract of our new principal, starting in the 25, 26 school year of San Pedro Elementary, and that's Carol.
I want to thank you so much in the closed session for approving me for this position. It's a position I take so seriously and it's a great honor to be here with our trustees and our cabinet and including our trustees from Sanderfell and Terellinda High School. It's so good to see you participating here tonight. I want to say that I am so excited to extend my tenure with this incredible team of professionals at San Pedro Elementary School, especially during Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to give a shout out to all the teachers out there for their hard work and dedication every school year. Also acknowledging this is Mental Health Awareness Month as well as AA, sorry, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month as well. Just really so happy to be part of a district that has diversity. So thank you for having me here tonight. And I just wanted to send a message to our families at San Pedro. I'm going to Spanish for families and then in English. San Pedro es una comunidad maravillosa, un lugar donde he ha amado trabajar durante casi cinco años. Es un gran honor continuar trabajando en San Pedro en este rol de liderazgo. A las familias de San Pedro, cada uno de sus hijos es un tesoro. Creo en la comunicación, comunicación abierta y la colaboración. Mi puerta está abierta para ustedes. Me gustaría conocerlos a todos juntos, lograremos mucho. San Pedro is a wonderful community, a place where I've loved working for almost five years. It's a great honor to continue working at San Pedro in this leadership role. To the families of San Pedro, each of your children is a treasure. I believe in open communication and collaboration. My door is open to you. If I don't know you yet, please come say hello. I look forward to all that we can achieve as a community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And secondly, the board also approved the contract for our principal of our Early Learning Center, and that's Ms. Allison Ball. Allison?
Thank you so much, community and board members. I'm so excited and honored to continue the work that we're doing at the Early Learning Center at Short School. I've loved the opportunity to be here for the first, this first year and all that we can do and grow with the early intervention program and all the TK students. So thank you so much.
And then, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay, I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda?
Motion approved by trustee David.
Indiava. Trustee Mo, that works too.
I get nervous now, like before, I don't have to call out the names. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Rivas. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Okay, next we're moving on to resolutions. So we have the approval of resolution 2425-68 and support and recognition of May 2025 as Labor History Month.
Yes, and our Assistant Superintendent for Edjepfalsers is Cecilia Benes. She's going to take this and present this.
Thank you. So we're seeking approval of this resolution 2425-68 in recognition of May as Labor History Month. This resolution recognizes labor's historic role and advocating for equitable access to public education. It also aligns with California's new state law, AB 800, which mandates that high school students receive education about their rights as workers and that we have opportunities in our schools during the month of May for students to engage in that kind of learning. It also promotes civic learning by highlighting the labor movement's role in advancing workplace rights. So we are excited to bring this forward and see how this grows in our, in our high schools in the coming years.
Thank you for presenting this. Trustees, any comments or question?
Super excited to potentially adopt this resolution. I think, you know, putting that seed in our future workforce is something that is really crucial.
I'm very proud that this resolution was brought forth, recognizing May as Labor History Month. Here in Sanderfell City Schools, we know that the strength of our schools is rooted in the dedication of working people, our teachers, classified staff, counselors, custodians, bus drivers, food service workers, and so many others who support our students every day. And as you uplifted, our student workers and their rights as well. This resolution is meaningful to honor the legacy of the labor movement and to help our students understand how worker protections like an eight-hour workday, retirement security, and safe working conditions came to be, not just in our history books, but through real people standing up through fairness. And so by embracing Labor History Month through this resolution, we're continuing that tradition that you spoke about of civic engagement and justice, which resonates on each of our school sites. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Comments, just say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
First by trustee Rivas and Indiava Marsh for a second motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
So trustee Kerner, we forgot to do one thing. We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, we did.
But we have to motion and second and.
We did.
It was a motion of me and then a second.
That's when I messed up, I messed up her name.
Yeah, you were working on it by the end of the night. That'd be great.
Okay, moving on to announcements. Does it matter which order we go in? Let's start, let's start off with our trustees. Okay, student trustee Zeno.
Yeah, I'll go first. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. This is a special time for all of us teachers to appreciate our amazing teachers that help us out every day. I would personally like to thank Ms. Madden for all she has done for the MSA class over the past two years and the amount of time and energy she puts into making sure that we all succeed. My next update is that AP tests are starting this week. This is time for us all to put our knowledge to the test. And so it's pretty stressful for most of us, but I'm sure that we're all going to be great. And so as a free prom boutique, they are giving away repurposed formal wear that would have otherwise gone to waste. This is an opportunity for students to get their prom outfits under their dreams without having to spend thousands of dollars. My next update is that last week, federal judge Heywood Gilliam visited our students. Students were impressed with their experiences in the field of law and all the steps that go into the adjudication process. My next update is Terellinda has a kickoff challenge on the football field. On May 8th, students will compete in punting, kickoffs, and field goals in order to compete for Terellinda swag and Chipotle gift cards. And my final update is shout out to the Terellinda swim team for absolutely sweeping at the NCAA championships. They won almost all the events and placed second in the other one.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your update. Okay, moving on to San Rafael High School, student trustee Mercer.
As previously mentioned, AP exams are this week and next week, and so is teacher appreciation this week. And for some upcoming events, the Bulldog Music Fest fundraiser is this Saturday, May 10th. Nicole Caioca will receive the Golden Bell Award on May 22nd at Dominican University. She was one of our math teachers and she was nominated to receive this award by the other staff at Sanderfell High School. The senior cap and gown pickup and ASB closing ceremony is on May 16th. And speaking of ASB, Alma Camacho is taking over as Sanderfell's Board Representative in the 25 to 26 school year. And she's saying that. Some more exciting news is Drama is receiving funding for a class to come back at SR. The SR Boys Volleyball Team made it to NCS for the first time in school history. Girls Swim and Softball also made NCS. And more on athletics, seniors Arlene Guzman and Teo Cristea are receiving the Marin Athletic Foundation Outstanding Student Athlete Award for SR at a banquet this evening. These students were selected for their athletic involvement, scholarship, leadership, deportment, and school slash communication involvement. Thank you.
Thank you for your updates. I think we'll go to the board and then to the union.
Okay.
Trustee Lau, you, you give an update for us?
I, I want to focus on gratitude and cultural celebration this month. I want to express my sincere gratitude for several things. First is the Heads Up Carnival. It takes a, it does take a village and I witnessed that firsthand myself on Saturday. Everyone worked together and worked very hard and pulled up this very successful event. And as we, as we all know well and learned from it that day, that we try to control everything, but the one thing we don't have control over is modern nature. But despite the rain, I think I want to echo Heads Up Foundation to fans our incredible community for making it such a fantastic day for all. A perfect reflection of our mission, community, equity, and joy. Last Wednesday, I attended a webinar presented by the CSBA titled Legal Consideration, Learning AI Tool in Education Educational Setting. The webinar highlights and discusses AI used in classroom and administrative setting in areas such as the FERPA, how to prevent page your sermon copyright infringement, and also student accessibility issue as well. While I was at University of Michigan this last weekend, attending my friend's graduation, the speaker from the statistic department also talked about AI. So that was the, the speech that given, and of course, you know, for the statistic department and informational system that, that makes sense. One of the quote that I share, I want to, I want to share here is, is the speaker said, fear not AI, but the fear itself. So I think we are all in the AI generations and it's something that we definitely want to learn more. I also attended the Coleman Open House with our superintendent. And I want to thank you, Principal Alex Peck, for taking us around and showing us around the classroom. I really enjoyed his presentation here in person the week before, but then actually seeing everything in action. I think my highlight was meeting Ruby, who in person, who was behind a mascot. She was, I think she was the mascot for Davidson for the Cougar. So I was able to, to meet her in person and thank her for doing such.
Did you get autographs?
Last, I wanted, last needs to want to acknowledge, you know, this month of May is the Mental Health Awareness Month. There's also many other celebrations, including today, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo, as well as Jewish Heritage, American Month, and also AAPI Heritage Month. Also including the Teacher Appreciation Week this week and also the Classified Staff Employee next week. And Happy Mother's Day and that's coming weekend as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lau. I just want to congratulate our students from Sanderfell, who will be receiving that award later tonight. And I want to wish everybody luck with their AP exams. I know that that was a very challenging time for me at least. So I wish you guys all the luck and all the best. Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our board meeting. Over the weekend, I once again was able to attend the Sanderfell City Carnival. It was great to connect with students and families and be able to volunteer at the ticket stand. I want to thank all of our volunteers, maintenance and operation members, and heads up leadership that made this all happen. It is something big that takes a lot of coordination and I do wish to recognize this publicly. That same day, I was able to attend the Cultural Fusion Fair here at Terellinda High School. Dr. Lau accompanied me with representatives from the Canal Alliance, Marin 9 to 25, and even the Youth Leadership Institute, initiatives that students were able to coordinate. And I was able to reconnect with Play Marin, Paul Austin, which was great. I encourage our students to continue to excel in these roles and, you know, pioneering events like this. I also was able to connect with local churches and spoke to their leadership on behalf of SRCS in partnership with Pepe Gonzalez. Our hope is to bring Sanderfell City Schools enrollment services, leverage our partnerships with community clinics to reach the youth of our community, who unfortunately will not attend school because of their inability to navigate so many new things. I hope that great things come with this collaboration and I hope to be an essential part.
Trustee Rivas.
Oh my gosh, thank you. I love this teamwork situation is fantastic. That's why I play that Jeopardy theme song. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. And as trustee Lau had shared, you know, it was so great that in past board meetings, we had unanimously approved those resolutions, supporting all the different heritage ones. And now here we are in, in, in May, celebrating it in the spirit of keeping things local. I'd like to give a special thank you to San Pedro Elementary for reaching out about Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month and inviting me and hopefully trustee Lau as well to contribute to your student celebration deck reflecting specifically my role as the first Filipino-American to serve as a Sanderfell elected and, and how that really plays into how we serve. Our lived experience is our, our experience and that should be celebrated. It's always an honor to support our school communities in uplifting student identity and heritage. I also want to uplift the young leaders in our district who are part of the Marin 9 to 25 initiative. There are many students from Sanderfell City Schools who participate, as trustee Rivas had shared. I want to actually highlight that they are hosting and to support the upcoming Marin Youth Mental Health Art and Film Showcase that will be on May 18th at Terellinda High School from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It will feature student art, film, free food, a resource fair, and a live performance by Margot and Friends, who doesn't love live performance art. I encourage everyone to attend and support our young people in the same spirit of attending different student-run activities, clubs, or sports at our various sites. I actually want to congratulate, and finally, you can talk about Terellinda baseball and you're finally here. Your baseball team with a terrific win against Branson on Friday. I know I'm specifically there, but it all, it was senior night for our Terellinda team. But it was cold and windy, but gosh, the hot dogs were delicious. But I just wanted to say that even though we can't make it to all the different teams and sporting events, when we can, it's such a joy to be in the stands with parents and community members and folks. So I just wanted to share that and it's great because you're sitting right there. On April 22, I attended the Culture Equity and Belonging Committee meeting. Our final meeting of the year will be on May 20th. We've been working hard to reflect on what SRCS should know, do, and implement when it comes to equity and belonging. And I look forward to this committee sharing their recommendations to our board at a future meeting. And finally, in the same spirit of celebration, a big thank you to the Heads Up Foundation and all the volunteers who made the April 26 Heads Up Carnival such a success despite the rain. Specifically to the MNO Custodial and Food Teams of Sanderfell City Schools. They were again incredible partners for Heads Up. And of course, the weeks of work by Michelleen, Tracy, Emmy, and Amy and Emily at the Foundation for the Event Success. While I was not able to attend due to my husband's milestone birthday celebration, you know, there's a balance of life. I loved seeing all the joyful photos via social media, especially the one of Dr. Jason Lau and trustee Isai Rivas posing with all of the school mascots that truly captured the spirit of the day despite the rain. Thank you to everyone who came out, bought raffle tickets, and supported our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you for her. I had a chance to attend something that we, we passed here a few months ago, a design and build committee for our performing arts facility that's coming up at Sanderfell High School. So we got to see four different contractors or developers and architects working together, coming up with the new designs. And I just want to say a special thanks to the facility team for bringing in all great vendors who put forth really, really good options. So what's really neat about this process is we see a full spec and design of this building from multiple different perspectives, trying to solve the same problem, but different ways of doing it. And at the end of the day, when we do go with one of these, these groups, we still have these other ideas that came out of this competition that we had that we can consider and to come up with the best facility moving forward. So I'm excited to see what the next steps are for that. It was an all-day event, but it didn't feel like all day, believe it or not. I found it to be very exciting and engaging. So thank you, everyone, for putting that together. And it's also nice to see kind of from when we approve a process to going through to the next step. It's really, it's rewarding to see that moving forward. And I still say every facility that I've seen go up in this district over the last years has been a big plus to the community. No one complains about the results of what's up, so it's all very good. In addition, I did join the CSBA webinar that Dr. Lau attended as well. Very informative. I tend to be on the side of execution and doing stuff with AI and trying to play with these tools. It was great to hear the legal perspective of all the privacy issues that come up, which are all very valid and things that need to be thought about and considered, especially with our students. So it was very good to get to kind of that well-rounded perspective on this and to understand the challenges that are coming. Still excited about all the things that we can do with this, but also about being cautious and deliberate about how we would implement it into the schools. So that's it for my update. Superintendent Geisels?
Have the pleasure of visiting Glenwood College, Mr. Ray, and walking around the site. I had a great time and I'm excited to see Glenwood's presentation this evening and their artwork. It's amazing. So also to happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you so much to our teachers for their hard work and dedication. They make such a positive impact on our students' lives every day. And on Friday, Mr. Gonzalez and I had the opportunity to participate in the Steering Committee kickoff for Canal Palmas Neighborhood. So that was at Pickleweed. We got to spend a little money there talking about that. And thank you to everyone who participated in the Heads Up Carnival. I unfortunately was at home with pneumonia. So I missed it, but I heard it was just a big smashing success. So happy Mother's Day to everyone, happy Grandmother's Day, Aunt's Day, whatever you are. I hope you have a lovely weekend and that's all I have.
Thank you for your update. Now we can move on to the union updates. We can start with CSEA.
I'm not seeing anyone with CSEA on unless they raise their hand.
You can just come back, like maybe we start with, how about SRTA?
We, if somebody from SRTA is on, if they could raise their hand, they're here. Yep, we have somebody in person. Sorry about that.
I'll go with one of these. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'm Jaime Solis, SRTA treasurer and third grade teacher at San Pedro, representing Sanderfell Teachers Association, early intervention through eighth grade educators this evening. This evening, we would like to acknowledge and celebrate our colleagues and membership, membership of incredible educators as we kick off Teacher Appreciation Week today. Additionally, the month of May, or the 100 Days of May, as we might call it, is packed with standardized testing for our students, grades three to eight, preparation of class configurations, transition meetings, organizing curriculum, and curricular orders, field trips, promotion prep, and more. As we are in testing season, our members would like to voice the extra layer of challenges with testing schedules that limit the typical amount of testing time due to strict schedules around Wi-Fi bandwidth. This has been particularly challenging in support, in supporting our special education students across multiple grade levels and who may require separate testing environments. We hope to find new solutions to bandwidth constraints for next school year. This time of year also prepares us for next year and we are looking forward to what is to come in the new school year with the K through five math curriculum, TK curriculum, as well as K five learning arts and middle school math curriculum pilots coming. SRTA members have been excited to participate in the early stages of the language arts process already in motion this spring. Lastly, negotiations continue this Friday to revise the system professional growth evaluation documents and the process for peer assistance and review, P I R. Thank you.
Do we have someone from?
On Zoom, we have SRFT. We have Morgan. Morgan, you can unmute yourself and.
Good evening. Morgan Agnew, President of the Sanderfell Federation of Teachers. I'd like to use our report tonight to do something I probably should have done at the last meeting, and that is to express SRFT's enthusiastic but qualified support for the Oak Hill Apartment Project. Let's start with the enthusiastic part. It's more fun. We have members who commute as much as an hour and a half each way because they can't afford to live any closer. We have members who live in Marin, but who pay so much for rent that they have no realistic path to homeownership. And we have members who live in housing that is in disrepair or isn't safe. The Oak Hill project would be a godsend for these educators. Oak Hill will be a wonderful place to live for many of our members. Educators from outside the Bay Area without an existing family or social network could live somewhere where they immediately have something in common with all of their neighbors. Educators with kids could live in the safest community in Marin. Where else can you live where all of your neighbors have undergone fingerprinting and a background check? And all future Oak Hill residents will get to live in a beautiful setting with excellent access to mass transit. But the value of the project isn't just in serving our existing staff. Who would have to upend their lives and move in order to take advantage of it? Oak Hill will be a phenomenal recruitment tool for future staff. The high cost of living in Marin has cost us many qualified applicants who are excited to work here until they realize they can afford student loan payments or Bay Area rent, but not both. Being able to offer housing along with a job will significantly improve our ability to recruit top educators from outside the Bay Area. Right now, we mostly just steal them from Novato. On that note, keep in mind that in all likelihood, Novato will be going forward with this project. If we don't follow suit, we are likely to lose prospective teachers to Novato when they find out Novato can get them cheap rent on a beautiful, brand-new apartment. And the best we can offer them is a 60-minute slog through traffic from an apartment in Ronan Park. Now for the qualified part of our support. Of course, we share the same concerns that everyone else does. We don't want to get out over our skis and end up on the hook for rent of unfilled apartments. So we urge the staff and board to be prudent and conservative and not commit to more apartments than we think we can fill based on our surveys of our employees. Keeping in mind, though, that many, if not most, future tenants, excuse me, don't work here yet. If we undercommit and we end up with a waiting list, that just means we know we have the demand to justify our support for the next educator housing project. that just means we know we have the demand to justify our support for the next educator housing project, maybe even one led by our own district in the model of Jefferson Unified and others. With that, we urge the board to support the Oak Hill project to the maximum extent justified by the potential demand within our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. And is anyone from CSCE?
Nope. Seen none.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment on non-aggendized items. Oh, sorry. Actually, would you remind the announcing board, the green ribbons?
I know that it's always weird to like be whispering because we don't want. We, we as a board, we want to acknowledge for those who may not know why we're wearing these green ribbons. The green ribbon represents Mental Health Awareness Month. And so it's not May just being a month, it's just more of a visual reminder. And I'm proud to wear it every day if I have the opportunity to, and I actually just keep it permanently on here. But we just wanted to uplift that, that this is the significance of this ribbon and thank those who are wearing them not only in this room, but also in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment on non-aggendized items. Anyone in the room who has a comment?
Those on Zoom can use the raise hand feature if they wish to give a public comment. You can give it a moment. Seen none.
All right. No additional comments. So moving on to our presentation for tonight, we have an update from Glenwood Elementary. Jay Cotson, the principal, will be presenting Glenwood. Yes, whatever.
Good evening. I'm Jay Cotson, the principal of Glenwood Elementary School. This is my second year and what I'm hoping to present to everybody tonight is how we are exemplifying equity, community, and joy in our tenants of school as well. At the beginning of professional development last year, I presented three outcomes that I wanted to really adopt and adhere to as a staff, which is ongoing collaboration and communication with the community to strengthen those ties from homeschool. Really wanted to make sure we have fidelity to what's going on to classrooms, to curriculum structures, so that kids who go from one grade to the next have commonalities throughout. And then also staff and student community wellness. Those are our big focus. We think they all tie together with equity, community, and joy. And hopefully through the presentation, I can demonstrate how we are doing that.
You can use the clicker or just let me know.
All right, so a little bit about us. I wanted to showcase what's going on on the campus as well because finally, some of the construction, which is most noticeable, being wrapped up and it really shines a light on the campus. Because what it looks like, looked like on the outside in the yards didn't quite match what was going on inside the classrooms. And now it's really coming together. So when you walk around the school and enter classrooms, you really are seeing that community and the joy on kids' faces. They get outside and there's these wonderful open spaces that they get to play in. I didn't show the northern part of the yard. We're working on that one right now. But this is an amazing facility. I have the opportunity to take people in it on school tours. If they don't have TK or Kinders, they wish their third graders that were coming in were because they are really dynamic spaces. And I know everyone's going through construction, but it has just been an amazing experience. They've been so helpful. It's nice to have them on site when we're there because they are very receptive to suggestions. We are currently a staff of 24 credentialed staff members, 14 classified staff, four specialists, and me as the principal. This is a breakdown of what our school demographics look like. We do like to showcase the diversity and we do it in multiple ways. Morning meeting, we utilize this time to recognize student achievement, making important announcements, really just come together as a community. We do that on Mondays and Fridays, kind of to welcome the kids in from a weekend, unify the expectations for the week, and then on Friday, kick them off into the weekend. I'm the biggest cheerleader, but now I've also, we have a student council that comes up and does all the announcements. So they've been empowered and it also sets an example for the younger kids who really want to get into those roles as they move forward and see that being a part of something bigger than they already are is something they're really yearning for. We hold assemblies monthly. We try to incorporate the community's input on that because most of us, including myself, when I look back on my elementary years, I'm not saying, I really remember this history lesson or I really remember a science lesson. It was the actual experiment in the field or something a classroom teacher brought in that was memorable that usually involved the entire community, the community of learners. And having a good time on a field trip with your friends is something that sticks in your head. And if you can connect that to the curriculum, that's the overall goal because you're having fun as you're learning. So that's what we try to do in those assemblies. We also have enrichment classes. We have library once a week, art, music, PE. We have something really unique, our GSF, which is our parent organization that raises money and puts on events. Among many other things, they bring in a mobile maker lab once a month. So it's aligned with our standards, so the kids are getting hands-on experience from an alternate teacher, which then is aligned with their practices and the classes that they're learning. And once again, it's providing that experience that kids can reflect on, a shared learning experience that they can then apply what they're learning in theory back to that experience. Marin Trex is also a program that comes in once a month. Mr. C is, I guess I would say, he's a bi- biological scientist, but.
Like a reptile scientist.
Yeah, he's a reptile, some life sciences. I'm sorry. He's a reptile guy. But he comes in and he ties everything and we live in that really, the school's in that really rich natural environment. So he tries to tie it in. They just did a owl pellet study. So they're learning about little ecosystems each time and the kids, some kids who are afraid of snakes, afraid of any reptiles, are the ones posing with them wrapped around their bodies now. So it's a really neat, neat thing to see these kids grow. And we do have student leadership opportunities. And instead of just having a school site council that meets and does spirit weeks, they really are active. They're doing announcements, they're answering questions, they're meeting with me to determine what we're going to be doing, what type of assemblies they'd like to see, community events, which I'll get to in a second. There are part of the monthly character building and celebrations. We do SOAR awards every Friday, which we have core values. Each month, we have a core value. Teachers recognize a student, they get to come up. We make a special announcement, say what they exemplified the skill with, and they all come up and take a picture that gets posted with the mascot in our office. We have student-to-student recognition awards, which is extremely important too. Not only to be recognized by adults, but by your peers. And then ongoing student achievement and accomplishments are exemplified and shared during those assemblies. Other events we have to bring community and joy. We do our welcome night, book fairs, movie nights, dances, a dance-a-thon, talent show. We just did this Taste the World Multicultural Event. We wanted every family to have an opportunity to come in and share their culture. So we had over 20 families come in, bring in traditional food, traditional clothing. We had a DJ who played traditional music from each of the families that brought in. To get them there, he also got to play 20 minutes of house music at the end, so he really enjoyed that. And once again, all that does is build upon, so next year it will probably be 40 families. And that's my goal of the school is everything that we are implementing. We want to break down the silos of learning, make it a shared experience, and that's really what we're after. So making sure with all of the heritage months to go on, we want to make sure we exemplify those with real experiences for everyone to see things in action. Here are some examples of some of the things, the SOAR awards, Taste the World Multicultural Night. Here's our data, our Goal One for Student Success, Accelerating Academic Achievement. Our 2023 versus 2024 results are 23, 24, 24, 25. You can see there's a little bit of growth overall, pretty much across the board, but it's not enough. That's why we are really focusing on, like I said, the silos of a classroom. We're trying to break those down because we do have a lot of experts in the field on campus that are holed up in a classroom. So a big goal that we're doing this year, and we have an amazing instructional coach who is helping align these practices, is learning walks. So what we're doing is really blocking, laying out blocked time for small group instruction so that every single day, a teacher setting aside 30 minutes of small group instruction to intervene with students needing more support. So kids are working at different levels, needing different support. And with these learning walks, we're able to get teams of teachers. So TKK1, I'll go, we get subs in there and they all go around and walk, look at the teacher's practice, take notes, bring it back to their own practices. So what we're currently doing to address the gaps that you see here, obviously, these gaps are pretty dramatic. You see overall 68% of our students proficient or above in ELA, 70% in math, but then in our English learners, multi-language learners, have significantly lower scores. And we are really trying to combat this with the small group instruction and more support and studying what is keeping things, what we can do to create more equity in these scores. Our Low-South Economic students, they are performing nearly at the same level as our overall student body. This is what we're doing to address these gaps. Continuing to bring strong, build strong classroom communities in order to develop relationships because if you're not comfortable in a learning environment, you're not going to be successful. And we really want to make sure everyone is a unique individual with ongoing communication with families, not just sending a parent square for everybody, but when you see somebody struggling, really reaching out with a phone call to make sure support is there and ask what more support is needed. Structured listening and speaking protocols are being implemented in classrooms to ensure opportunities to interact with each other using academic models. You'll see this in classrooms. This was something I wanted to showcase with Superintendent Cottson. When she came in, I said, you can look at the learning targets that are posted because we want everyone to know when they walk into a classroom, what are the students learning? And you can ask students and they can tell you what they're learning or what they are working on in a small group. You'll see agendas on the board and we want that consistently from as you walk around from TK all the way to fifth grade. Because a TK student wanting to go to kindergarten knows exactly where they're going to look, exactly the routines they're going to learn. So by the time they're in fifth grade, they should be excelling at these things. All teachers have been SEAL trained, using formative assessment on an ongoing basis. That's what these small group instructional, these small instructional groupings are doing as well. Ongoing assessment, exit tickets to see if kids are picking up on the concepts on a daily basis. Instruction that's differentiated based on needs of students and ongoing consultation and collaboration with grade-level colleagues, as I already alluded to. So once again, you can still see what I just emphasized. Our English learners and students with disabilities and our students identified as socio-economically disadvantaged continue to perform below proficiency, and these are the steps we are doing to change this data. So our next steps, what we're really focusing on, now that I'm heading into my third year, we are fine-tuning. And once again, it takes trust as a new leader comes in. Over the last two years, we've really been working collaboratively to focus on the needs of each of our students. We are now establishing weekly schedules that allocate small group instructional blocks, meeting as a professional learning community three times a month so we can talk about the challenges and the successes that are going on with the strategies we're implementing. Ensure all lessons have stated learning targets, ensure all lessons give students the opportunity to engage. This is the, by the way, I put through this intention, we, these are goals that we're doing on our walkthroughs. We're able to see these things with a lens. So ensuring all lessons have learning targets, ensure all lessons give students the opportunity to engage in multiple ways. We want to see students talking with each other, not just the teacher talking. And their teachers are constantly looking for strategies to do that. Ensure ongoing checks for understanding. It could be an exit ticket, it could be a conversation, a small assessment, creating opportunities for student collaboration and community building and language development being a central focus. Kids who need more structure such as sentence frames, sentence starters, those are available at all times as well. Also to support this effort, the instructional coach and I am going to do routine observations going in, not evaluative observations, but just observations to see what's going on in the room, point out the strengths that are happening so that we can build upon those when we get together in our professional learning communities. Learning walks are conducted by grade-level teams to see what's happening in the grade below, their own grade level and the grade above. Professional development will be focused on strengthening collaboration between and among credentialed teachers in order to use the expertise of the people who are in the room because we do have a lot of experience. And we also have new teachers coming in with a world of experience as well. So the confluence of both really makes it stronger. And this was just some data collected from the learning walks. After the first one, you can see in bold, those are our targets that when we go inside and look at a classroom, making note of lesson objectives, opportunities for students to engage, checks for understanding, opportunities for student collaboration and language development with sentence frames and those type of things. You can see the strong evidence, some evidence, no evidence. Round one, I'm just focusing on the strong evidence. You can see the growth in each of those as we did our walkthroughs. And that's telling of how we are coming together and developing our skill every time we meet. And that now brings it to any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Ask the trustees if you have any questions or feedback.
I guess I could start it off. I just want to say, I think I heard you say the GSF is a group of parents that sponsored this mobile maker event or once a month activity that happens. I think that that's very, that's very, it's very good for that to happen. My question is, what do you see these student enrichment programs and what do you see come out of that?
I see a connection to theoretical discussions. Sometimes it puts into action what kids are learning on paper or learning about in videos or on their computers. Things they're reading, oftentimes they haven't had the experiences out in the field. And this is a way to bring the field to kids because it's hands-on experience, it's kinesthetic. It's appealing to all varieties of learners. And it's just when you see this happening and the kids going home and talking about it, that's when you know something is working. And I feel like they're able to connect these things or even in discussions with kids. They're like, oh, that's just like, and then they tie it to that. And that's really what I based my education on. And when I go into the classroom, if the kids are universally, not just with this, smiling and laughing and engaging. And when I drop down to a knee and say, what are you, what are you working on here? And they're able to tell me, I know that these things are really coming to fruition. And that's my evidence with that as well. And Mr. C, when I come in and I'm saying, well, what'd you think of this? Oh, we learned how to, that you can assemble the feather or the hair in these bones and it used to be a mouse. I had no idea that it used to be a mouse, you know, so it's just these little things that happen. And that's what is really strong about the GSF is if we can think it, they can actually act behind it financially. And that's where we have that lucky resource that not everyone has. So I really appreciate that. And it really just takes people bringing in an idea. Overall, it's just, and that's what I'm talking about with this collaboration. Overall, someone bringing in an idea that is powerful because if kids are getting use out of it. And then we reevaluate at the end of the year, and that's what we did here as well. And to get to the staff, to get to the community, and everyone said, let's go forward again. So it's important to evaluate everything as it's going, not just stick to it because always stuff.
You noted that you have a student council. Is that a newer iteration for your team? And how's that differ from your green team or they won in the same?
The green team strictly works with the environmental aspects of waste. And we have TK, second adult running that. We used to have a teacher doing it who goes out every lunch and ensures that the students are working with each other and empowering and advocating for each other to put their things in the right place, not just leave things behind. As with any school, what happens is things you left behind are just thrown into one bin and they are learning what to do and how to separate that. So that's the green team. And the student council takes on a little bit more collaborative role with staff and brings a voice to the kids. For instance, beyond Spirit Week, talking about the assemblies they'd like to see. We just had a science and magic assembly and getting some student voice into these things, as well as surveys, like kids asking other kids to answer things so that we can find out what does make them happy, what do they look forward to. And that's another thing, actually, I'm glad you asked that question because I was lucky enough to go on a tour with other principals to Davidson. And when, there were so many strengths to see there and I was overwhelmed. It looked like blood cells. Everyone comes out of the rooms and knows exactly where they're going.
Literally live on that street, so yes, the traffic is wild too.
I was off the mic over that, but also the clubs that are happening at lunchtime. And it got, it just lit a fire under me because I'm like, we have all these parents who are such strong resources and community members who are such strong resources. We're looking into, how can we? We're looking into how can we reinvigorate recess? And, you know, bringing in a parent who wants to do a basketball club. Weekly, like every Monday, I'm going to come out here and help support the yard by doing basketball skills. Uh, so that was something that I took away from there because I really want to start incorporating that. And it also maintains supervision and gets kids new skill sets that are just outside of the norm. So. That was something I took away from there and much like with the GSF contributions, I want to start bringing in community members who. Would like to have more of a connection, but work gets in the way or anything, but think they could make. One dedicated recess break uh a week consistently. So there's some things I'm really looking forward to is really tying that in and utilizing the strengths of the community that we have there.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Uh, I, I want to thank you again for, for coming and, and providing the presentation. I really appreciate your time. Uh. I guess the, the number um that you, thanks for sharing the data as well. The number of the um English language learner uh in terms of their um, the gap. Have caught my attention. If, if I understand correctly, that across the district. Your school has relatively smaller percentage of English learner compared to. How is the content of there? Cause I don't know that the, 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 the data that you show is at which grade level and do.
There's two, that's, that's a good question.
Do you see that increase also, you know, being, maybe you can clarify and tell us a little bit more about.
How the data equates to.
Progress, you know, throughout the years.
Um, quite frankly, I, I only know from last year to this year and it's, it stayed pretty static. Um, and what I'm looking at is that's why we're looking at more focused, small group intervention with consistency. On all teachers part by saying, here's when it's happening, here's how it's happening. Also, the instructional coach is now polling since we have a smaller number. Um, polling small instructional groups daily as well. So also some of the data I showed. Which I reflected on just as you talked. One was the S back first grades three to five and one was an I ready data. So what's able to happen is making some predictions and I'm seeing the I ready data as if you look at tests or. End of the year outcomes on CASP, these would be projected. So I'm sorry, when I looked down at the I ready data, it wasn't a comparison of CASP. I'm trying to make predictions based on our I ready formative assessments, which should. Based on last year's data, come pretty close to predicting what's going to happen with the CASP. Um, but even so, when I took the data from I ready, it's. A little higher, but significantly lower than um the overall. So that's where we are putting that lens. So I'm interested to see. What else we can do to improve that because there's a lot to be done. But that's why our focus, everything that you see is our, our lens going into the rooms is with multi-language learners in mind.
So I, I do appreciate you, you, you pointed it out and look at the data and how. To cap, you know, I know the next slide you have plan and. And, and intervention that you can do to uh help this English learner. And I hope the percentage relatively small, hopefully um we, some target work can really kind of help. Close that achievement gap of these students.
And that's what we see. We see when you, when anybody gets small, more small group support across the board, when you, you do that, there's. Obviously going to be more attention to individual skill sets and that's really what we're trying to do with these small groups. And once again, just getting that blocked in every day. Is a powerful thing that we can ensure it's happening. So when you walk in, you see these small groups.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one kind of quick follow on to that because I, I, it's obviously it, it is going to be harder for the English learners. And especially economically disadvantaged students to um move up on, on some of these things. But do we have a sense of, I've been thinking about this, like what would be a um, a good number of kind of a change? That represents that, because it's, it, it likely won't just be, it's not going to be a parody, right? Like it's not getting to. And, and because you're getting new students in all the time too, it's, it's the same challenge. I'm just kind of curious if I have a perspective on it. It's not a completely fair question.
Yeah, minimally ten percent, ten to fifteen percent would be the ideal uh per year. That um, right now we had one student reclassified, which is too low. We have thirty-three. Identified students as uh multi-language learners. Um, who have not passed LPAC uh redesignation. Um, last year, I don't think we had any. So I, that's one target area that I really want to focus on and that's something we are, we're. Kind of why are we not, how can we focus on the skill set that needs development within each of those students in order for them to meet? The, the meat, the median to pass that LPAC to be redesignated fluent English. Um, that's one indicator that we are using. And being able to identify students and that's what we're doing right now. All newcomers go directly to, all newcomer students who've been classified as newcomers are working in a small intervention group. With our instructional coach on a daily basis.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, I just want to point out, so thanks for doing all that, that hard work and, and your staff uh doing that. I know it's, it's a challenge to. Get these, these scores moving in the direction you want, but it's great to see that there is some progress. I always just, I'm trying to keep in perspective like what that range should be. It just helps. Me to look at that data in a, in a way, it's, it's more realistic.
And I agree. And these are conversations we have with the school senate council and the, the staff very often of. How can we do this? What, what is the problem? Or how are we going to move it? And, and that's just where our focus work is because we really do believe the rising, uh, rising tide raises all ships. So if you focus on the students that need the most support, naturally. Everyone's going to get the supports they need. And, and we did identify these as a staff as. How are students going to communicate with each other if they don't have the skill set? Well, we provide the skill set. So now there's a sentence frame for the activity that's going on. So at least when you're responding to a question, you know exactly what that looks like. And that's just how you continually build on it and using a lot of uh visual supports. These are the skills that. We are really trying to impart on everybody who's, who's teaching in the classrooms and everyone is doing that. And that's really important so that we have an environment that supports. And reflects the diversity and learning styles of all students.
Well, thank you very much. Any other comments?
No further comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. Do we have to take comments in the room or comments on Zoom after this presentation? Okay, thank you.
All right, now we move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Um, so for this, uh, is there any, anything that any of the, the board members uh want to have clarified? Or to, to pull out the discussion more?
Yep.
No.
Okay, based on that, um, I will move for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Um, motion to uh, to move by uh, Amiva Marsh.
A second.
Second by uh. But you allow and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to discussion and information and our first item is education services. So consideration. Uh, memorandum of understanding with social justice collaborative to provide legal, legal intake clinics for unaccompanied youth under a Cal New grant.
I'll be, I'll be talking about that.
Thank you.
So um, just to give a little bit of history around this MOU. And the Cal New Grant itself. So the Cal New Grant is the California Newcomer Education and Wellbeing Grant. And we applied for it in twenty-one, twenty-two um with the encouragement and support of former trustee Martell Dow. At that point, we were seeing a pretty sharp increase of our newcomers coming into our district. We've since seen a decline. Um, but that funding was specifically for newcomer students predominantly at the high school level. Um, who were coming in unaccompanied, unaccompanied minors. So we received that grant. It was a five hundred thousand dollar grant for three years. Um, we were fortunate that this year it was extended an additional year. And now we recently got the good news that they're extending another two years. This grant is through the Department of Social Services. And there's kind of three big components of this grant, the first being connection to basic needs. Youth development and youth engagement and then family engagement. So we've used, um, the bulk of that funding we've really used in our high school district to bring in high school ELD coaches. Doing work specifically with teachers and staff around culturally responsive practices and some of the strategies that Jake was mentioning. Just how do we actually engage our English learners, specifically our newcomer students, so that they can. Build the foundational skills to really access the curriculum. So along those lines, kind of one of the buckets that was missing when we did the grant review with Department of Social Services, just about a month, month and a half ago is. We, we have a lot of work in our district happening already to connect families to basic needs through our family centers, our community schools work, through our community liaisons, multiple partnerships. One of the areas that the grant really um encourages us to do is connect our families, in this case our, our unaccompanied youth. To some kind of legal services. We don't sponsor the legal services. We don't give legal advice. But really just serve as that kind of bridge to, to give them access. So this organization, um, the Social Justice Collaborative is actually an East Bay organization, but they've been working. In Marin County for about a year now in various organizations. They've been active in our um newcomer work happening that through MCOE. And um, they've been uh providing us with some of the know your rights trainings for our families. So we reached out to them, Pepe and I, and we had a great conversation with one of the lead um attorneys there named Abigail. And they're able to provide intake clinics for intake clinics throughout the year. And provide um some kind of like legal guidance or recommendations to let our students know and families know what are their options. And the reason we're really focusing on our unaccompanied youth is because not all of our families or our students in that scenario understand that. If they come to us unaccompanied before the age of eighteen, they actually do have a pathway to, to residency, but they might not always know that. And they're young, they have a lot of other kind of demands on them, just having made the journey here and trying to integrate into. Our school and our society. So we're really excited that we can now kind of fulfill this component of that grant. And be able to offer these legal intake clinics for our, for um unaccompanied youth.
Thank you. Uh, any questions?
No question. That's, that's great. I would actually like to meet with you and learn more about this. Um, it's very interesting to me and. And you know, just kind of bridging this gap to these legal clinics and, you know, shining the light on the pathway to residency.
Yes.
Something that is, you know, overlooked by youth. You know, sometimes they have the requirements of working and providing for their family. And if the district is, is helping to, you know, shine light on this, it's, it's huge.
Would the legal clinics be only open to Sander Falls City School youth or would it be open collaboratively to say other partners if, if they're eligible? I'm just curious under the grant parameters.
Yeah, under the similar year would just be specifically for our, as our CS families, because we were awarded the grant to serve our students and there's a lot of, as you know, reporting that goes along with that. So.
Thank you.
I, I'd like the student to have the option and be able to have access to these type of services. And to be able to make informed decisions. So I think this is, this is wonderful news. Um. I understand that you take up to like twen- is it twenty students that are up to eighty student intake or?
Yes, for four intakes, they could have about twenty um students per intake and it's all done remotely. Because this group, um, although the organization is local, they work with attorneys from around the country. So um, they offer kind of that zoom intake.
So is, will I first come first or because this doesn't cover everyone, right?
That's, that's kind of the next step of this work. Should you approve this um, and the next board meeting? Is really to develop a protocol and process for how we're identifying the students and the families. Because we also have to be cognizant that we do not ask families or students of their immigration status. But we, since we do have such a robust out, family outreach and student outreach through our liaisons and family centers and through our community schools work. We do know, uh, you know, students do share openly without some of, some of their situations. So that's the process, the next step of this process would be to identify what would that kind of protocol be to refer these students, these clients?
Fair to say this is more like a trial and see what the demand is and if it's more that you may consider increasing the numbers or?
Yeah, I mean, that really would depend on the funding. So we have two more years of this funding. Um, so we, we could, if this is successful this year, we could continue it for one more year utilizing that funding. Um, and we know that there is a demand, a hands down, any kind of in um outreach or needs assessment that's been done for multiple. Kind of of our working groups, IDLAC for one example, connection to legal resources is always right up there for, for our newcomers.
So would you say the eighties like how many, one third of the newcomer public count roughly cover how many?
From the high school population, um. Maybe now I'd have to go look at the numbers because the, there's, we consider a newcomer three years or less. That's kind of like the federal. Uh, guideline around that and we've seen a decrease. Um, and then we would definitely want to prioritize those unaccompanied minors first. Work with their, if they do have a family member here, but they came over alone or a sponsor, that would likely be kind of our first layer of outreach.
Thank you. Okay, now for item number two, um, from Superintendent Kai's house, the first reading to review revisions to the board policy and regulation. Uh, thirteen twelve point three, uniform complaints procedures and regulation and exhibits E one two.
The mouthful. So I am partnering with uh our students' director, Susan Afrum. And the background in this is that we have to be compliant for the current education code and then, and federal. And state law and regulations regarding uniform complaints. So there's been some changes. And Susan is going to just kind of highlight very briefly each of the sections, for example, uniform complaints. Um, what the changes are as far as education code is concerned. Susan, if you might.
Yeah, and I think the abstract kind of gives you a little bit of that there, because there are several laws that have come up over the past year. Making us having, having to look back at this and really update it. Especially thinking that we're preparing for our annual parental notice and making sure we have all of our documents ready for that. So for the board policy and the administrative. Uniform complaints, there's some updating of the title nine grievance process and some of the language. Including sex stereotypes, um, sex characteristics, gender identity, sexual orientation. Pregnancy, childbirth, termination of pregnancy, et cetera, and parental and marital family status. There is also a new law, um, which um prohibits the governing board from adopting. And approving the use of textbooks and instructional materials. Um. If the use would, would subject a student to unlawful discrimination in accordance with specific law. There is another law here that exempts newcomer students from district adopted graduation requirements or transfer of coursework. And credit requirements for our um, our newcomer students. Then in the administrative regulation, there's a specific section around um requiring the title nine notice of non-discrimination. On the basis of sex to be posted on the district's website and published in the district's handbooks and catalogs. Announcements, bulletins and application forms. That is the um. Board policy and admin regulations thirteen twelve point three. And then there is also the administrative regulation. Thirteen twelve point four, which is the Williams uniform complaint process. And that specifies the stocking of the school's restrooms with menstrual products. Um, for any schools that serve grades three through twelve. And also a new law that requires schools to maintain, that maintain um one all gender restroom for student use. Um. And updating the regulation to clarify that only complaints concerning facilities conditions. That pose an emergency or urgent threat to health or safety of students can be appealed to the superintendent of public instruction. And then there are a couple of exhibits that accompany those. Updates.
So what we will do is have you review it and then bring it back at the next board meeting for your approval. So you've got some time to review it and ask questions if you can.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just, just, just a quick question. So, so we know like, you know, with this new regulation being implemented. Are we in compliance of these regulations?
Yes, yes. And what, you know, when I look back at some of these, like making sure the restrooms are stocked. I mean, that's something that we talk about every year and when, you know, if someone points out that it's not, then we send someone out to do that. And then posting things on our websites and, and our catalogs, that's something that we also do. Um, so.
And the requirement of the gender neutral bathroom. Is that?
Yes, um, all of our, all of our schools have, um, it, when we, we have students who need access. Then we know that um each school has a, a bathroom where students can, can access. Like at Davidson, there's a nursing um section in the, in the main office. Where students may end up using that restroom. It's, it's all gender restroom.
Thank you.
There's an, there's also another. There's an, there's also another board policy that we have to review.
Okay, the next one. So this is the fifty-one point four five, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Non-discrimination harassment?
Yes.
Okay.
And some of the same laws are applying to this board policy, but this is also one that we refer to quite frequently through the year. And it also goes in our annual parental notice. So you'll see some of the same laws here as well. So the board policy on nondiscrimination, harassment, five one four five point three, it clarifies the purpose of Title IX, including the sex stereotypes that I mentioned in the previous one. Also that we schools must follow the Title IX grievance procedures when investigating and resolving a complaint based on the alleged conduct. And to encourage districts to have a student who has been suspended for an incident of racist bullying, harassment, or intimidation, as well as the victim, to engage in a restorative justice practice suitable to address the needs of the victim and the perpetrator. So you see that in the board policy. And then in the administrative regulation, some of the same language, but also includes a new law for districts that participate in the California Interscholastic Federation, or the C I F, to post on the website the California Department of Education standardized incident form to track racial discrimination, harassment, and hazing that occurs at school sporting events or games or events. And then one more law that requires the district that serves students in grades seven through twelve, for starting next year, to prove, to provide at least one hour of training annually to all teachers and certificated employees to incorporate C D E's online training curriculum to support L G B T Q plus cultural competency. Additionally, regulation updated to provide that employees are required to report incidents of prohibited discrimination within one workday of noticing it. So that's all part of that C D E training curriculum that both myself and Darlene are aware of, planning to, to put in place for next school year.
So we will bring this one back to you as well.
Any additional questions or comments?
My, my question about training, but I think you just addressed it already. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah. It's already been, it's already been developed by C D E.
Yeah.
Taken a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to discussion action session.
Yes, I have the next one. And this one was initially on our board agenda last board meeting. But we raised, we did this one, we're hoping to waive the first reading and we actually approved it tonight. So basically, this is a revisions of board policy thirty-five sixteen point five, which is emergency schedules. And basically, the new law and policy is updated to add health conditions to close the school. That would be important for the pool. And another addition is snowstorms. I think they probably did this with my former district in mind. Snowstorms is now on the list of emergencies where a district can apply for apportionment of credit for days. Tom Trucking unified, we missed sixteen days of school due to, we did not get any apportionment for it. So I think this is some of that result. To, also to the new law states that we now, as of July first, have to make a plan to recover the absence. In other words, now we can recover the absence by providing instructional minutes or materials for students. So that's a whole new part of this law. And then additionally, that will begin July twenty twenty-five to implement these attendance recovery programs for big grades kindergarten through twelfth grade. Additionally, we can also make sure that there are different modalities for the district to inform students and district parents of school closures, one of them being an automated system. The one thing that's interesting about this is at the very end of this, the new law says, when a district or school uses an automatic dialing announcing device for the device to be operated by a person who follows the procedures required by law to operate the device and disconnect the device when the call is terminated. So I think there were plenty of complaints where some parents were getting multiple phone calls. So that, that is actually now part of those. So those are the changes in this emergency procedures. So staff is asking you to approve this tonight under discussion and action.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the emergency schedule?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee DeNeva Marsh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Rodas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion is approved.
I remember the emergency we faced in December with the tsunami scare.
Yeah, that's exactly what I thought of. Sorry, that was, that's not a laughing matter, y'all.
That needed some, some finesse.
Now we miss school, we are obligated to provide the instruction that the students just. So that, that's a whole new.
A whole new world. Yeah, got it.
Okay, so for number two, and Darlene, I'm guessing this is you for human resources. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Yes, thank you. So the, we are requesting an approval of the Annual Declaration of Need. This is something that is required by the California Commission of Teachers, Teacher Credentialing, and requires all school districts to have this in place for our upcoming school year. Declaration of Need allows the district to project, should there be a need for filling a position, a credentialing position, and unable to find somebody, this allows us to have somebody that maybe is on a short-term permit or an intern credential. They not have their full credential, but they have enough to get one of those emergency-type permits. So we have this for the high school district and for the elementary district. You're requesting approval from the board.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns, comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee DeNeva Marsh. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. Darlene, back to you.
So this is requesting approval of resolution twenty-four twenty-five dash fifty-two, resolution reviewing and approving the joint district classified seniority list. C S C A leadership has reviewed this, and so we are seeking approval of the seniority list for classified for both districts.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
And do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by trustee Rodas. Do I have a second motion? Moved by Dr. Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. And Darlene?
Yes. So this is, if you recall back in March, we had a preliminary certificated layoff for our elementary school district. Based on particular kinds of services, M C O E is going to be taking back a program that impacts one certificated employee, that employee received their preliminary notice. So this is the final resolution indicating that the district is moving forward with that layoff. And so we are asking for approval of resolution twenty-two twenty-five dash sixty-seven, which is the resolution reducing or eliminating particular kinds of services relating to certificated employee. And that is only for our elementary school district. So we're asking for approval.
Any comments or questions?
You said M C O E is taking back, would this, the, the staff position, will they be able to absolve or, or support this position, or they're just eliminating it altogether?
This was a program that, this was a position that the district took, and now, and they're taking it back so they can.
They can hire.
Support that program for the services from that certification.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Dr. or trustee Lau, and seconded by trustee DeNeva Marsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion has passed. Okay, now we're moving on to education services. So this is approval for a first reading and a request to waive the second reading through review revisions to board policy and administrative regulations fifty-one twenty-six, awards for achievement.
Yes, so this one is pretty straightforward. And we're requesting approval this evening because this was another one of those items that was moved from the last board meeting. So San Rafael City Schools were, were one of the districts that participates in California State Seal of Biliteracy Program, which means students that can demonstrate proficiency in English based on state criteria and a second language, Spanish, French, also based on state criteria is eligible to receive a special seal on their diploma and to add that to their college applications. It's becoming a more sought after, sought after kind of recognition in the workplace and in colleges. So the eligibility criteria has changed from the state. So this is basically revising the criteria. You can see the strike throughs and the hard copy. And then the second part of this is just cleaning up some language around a couple of the other seals that are given to our graduating seniors. And then finally, this particular A R also allows for districts who choose to participate in a scholarship and loan fund. Our district is not one of those districts currently that does that, so we wanted to make sure that that was not in our board policy so that we are fully transparent. That is not something that we worry about.
Questions or comments, concerns? Thank you. So I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Rodas, have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Lau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passed. So I think it's back to you again.
I actually think I'm going to pass this off to my co-pilot, Stephanie, right? Are you next, or is it? Fourteen point six?
I'm going to pass it on to Mike here in a minute. Good evening, because a little handout here. These next two items are a renewal. However, because of the price quantity and the amount of children that it serves, we thought we'd give you guys a little context here. The history behind this program, which served over four hundred students now in our elementary district only.
And, and just to clarify, this is for item, agenda item number six and seven.
Yes. Each one will be independent. However, they are two partners that you have in the name of yours with the city and the A C R. I'll give you guys a second to review this data. And then, you guys have any specific questions? It is a renewal. We have more grant funding coming in from the state to serve more children.
But the renewable amount is well over one hundred thousand dollars. It's actually several.
It's, yeah, if you scroll to the far right column and I'll let Mike take it over. The A C S funding has stayed consistent, but the E L O P funding has done some fluctuating now to match our enrollment. And yes, the, the request is well over a hundred thousand dollars. Yes.
This is what we pulled by time range to talk about.
This is, well.
Well, one part of it.
This is based on the request from the board that.
Over, yeah.
Over a hundred thousand from the education services department because of impact students. We can discuss, including renewals. And this is probably the two biggest memos of understanding for CAS. And it's also my field where you know, what we're doing with these two grants.
Agreed. And context is helpful. I'm more than happy to tell you the story of expanded learning, what we, what we did a couple of weeks ago, and then what it looks like.
So our, our purpose is to ask for approval for these renewals. We have two separate. Maybe that's a lot of information.
Can I get some?
No, can't be stopped. Take a couple of minutes.
Please read.
Oh.
No, you can ask questions.
Can I just ask a clarified question under the section for opportunities? Can you remind us what solidifying rate two funding means?
Yes. So, and in fact, if you look at the graph at the top, the table at the top, where it says E L O P, you'll see that we went from zero dollars from eighteen to twenty, and then in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, we got a little bit, and then we've gotten more, and now we've gotten less. So we're a rate two district. And what that means is we, our unduplicated population falls below seventy-five percent. And so our, our rate fluctuates because the higher rate, above seventy-five percent unduplicated, those LEAs received two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per pupil to run their programs. And then we get the balance. So the rate two schools and districts get the balance of that. Adding TK, unduplicated student levels increasing, it made our piece of the pie smaller. And so all rate two districts have been, as I say, receiving a decrease. But we've been, our rates have been, our portionment's been decreased over the last few years. Right now, the legislative, legislators, I should say, are looking at how do we stabilize that rate? So we're trying to figure out if we keep rate one at two thousand seven hundred and fifty, it's lovely. Can we keep rate two at eighteen hundred, seventeen hundred? Frankly, just something that would be stable would be wonderful, so we can do some more long-term planning. If, if we were to bump into rate two, or I'm sorry, rate one, and our unduplicated population goes over seventy-five percent, we're stable for three years at that rate. It would be magical.
Thank you for that context.
Yes, of course.
Magical context.
Magical context, yeah. It's something I've been working on since we got our apportionment a couple of years ago, and it was significantly smaller than we anticipated.
Well, I think this is a question for, for you. Like, how, how do we think of these, so before and after-school programs? As like, just in general, like as we're thinking of the budget for schools and like how we have to balance things? The, and like, how critical is this compared to the classroom learning that happens, right? The before and after, like when we think of, of these in, in terms of how we prioritize them, like how should we think about that?
You know, like, most of Kevin's going to jump in and want to answer this, so.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's kind of a general question. So I, like, because it's not, like, it's not fair to assume, like, like classroom obviously is very important, but so is the, these, these things that happen outside. So I'm trying to give your perspective on, on how we should think about that.
Everybody's chomping at the bit. Here we go.
I'll give you one just contextual piece. We were doing our visits, Brad, I remember what's no mention of, but one of the directors was just saying that incoming families are calling the extended learning coordinators off the hook. Because if they're going to register their students, they want to make sure there's an after-school program for them to be able to send their kids. So I think that the increase in early learning, extended learning opportunities has increased our TK because of that. And tell you that our families can commit to send their kids to our schools until six o'clock at night. Working families need to find a place for their kids. So I don't want to minimize the quality of the programs, but that mindset of working families is a critical component that we're able to offer a program for families to send their kids to for the extended day. I had two phone calls today, actually, from, one parent is confirming, is my kid in? They're going because I've got work. I said, yep, your kid's in. And then another who actually lives in New York, who's considering moving and wanted to know like what the after-school situation was like in San Rafael and Devoto and Larkspur. Call me for anything, but here's our situation. So it's, it's hot. It's a hot button topic. I fielded probably thirty or so phone calls and emails in the last four weeks around that topic. I think the importance of after-school, and frankly, like coming from school day for seventeen years and after-school now in three years, I, I'll totally candid, I didn't see that, I didn't see all that can happen after school. And now with this rate fund increase with expanded learning opportunities coming in, you can see the impact on the students in that given day. And then you can see the impact on their parents and on their big siblings. Because if the big sibling doesn't have to babysit in the summer because their little sibling is in a summer program, they're more likely to get those A D G requirements, to take a summer camp or just take a summer class program. So really, we're able to see this impact across the community. I like to often go to, I go to Target a lot. I have two little boys. I go to Target all the time. But one of my little litmus tests is to go to Target during an intercession and see how crowded it is. And if it's crowded, I know I made a mistake. And if it's quiet, I know everyone's at my programs. It's, it's not foolproof, but it does work fairly well.
Just, just a careful, fine questions. Sorry.
No, no, I was gonna say, Stephanie or Cecilia had anything to add.
I was just gonna add, one of the shifts we've made in our programming really since COVID has been diving into the research around what makes an effective after-school and summer program. And it's not kind of what you might think it is, right? They actually don't see huge increases in student learning by providing extra reading classes. um, extra reading classes and extra math classes at the, for the youngest kids. What they really see is an increase in learning outcomes, mostly in language and actually, like, Principal Hodgson was talking about, experience when kids are engaging, like, meaningfully with friends. They could be cooking, they could be dancing, they could be doing art, as well as some homework help. So that's been a big shift we've made in our summer program in particular, have it be more camp-like in our inner sessions because that's actually where the biggest gain for kids are in that reducing summer slide. And so we, so kind of everything they were saying, but then actually the structure, like the content of what's happening during those programs, we've really shifted based on research over the past five years or so to make it much more camp-like for our students.
Okay, focused on engagement for that full day. I want them there all day exhausted when they go home.
Just, just careful, I'm quite, but in terms of funding, even though, let's say, classroom learning is more important, these funding are not, it's not frangible. We cannot just move these over to the WACL.
No, that's correct.
These are only for our classroom outside after-school program, right?
Correct. And in fact, if we wanted to, we could do a cost share with certain things. Uh, and that's a new part of the language as well. If I wanted to buy a couch and use it for after-school, but Mr. Peck wanted to use it at Coleman, he could pay for two-thirds and I could pay for a third, and we'd have to track that in our law and for when an auditor and FPM comes. I think the other context I had, one of the four pillars of the community schools grant is extended learning opportunities. And I think about the total health and family, this is one that impacts their total wellbeing because the reading, the writing, the math, all those things, we're paying care for in the school day. But where's that fun? Where's that joy? Where's that access to some of these partners that we're able to develop and grow? And bring in really amazing hands-on activities and field trips for students that wouldn't have those opportunities for this funding, for this funding and for this creation of this model.
Great, thank you for everyone for your question.
So we need to wrap up something for item number six, which is the MOU, our district, and the school program. Seventh, which is.
Okay, we'll start with item six. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Uh, moved by trustee DeNava Marsh. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by trustee Lau. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Uh, do I have a motion for number seven?
Motion to approve number seven.
Moved by trustee Radas.
Second.
And seconded by trustee DeNava Marsh. And all those in favor say aye.
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 And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More than happy to share all about when we do that for school.
Go visit.
Yeah. Send me a box. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we don't have anything for fifteen. Go back into session.
And we have the final. It's gonna be our tradition.
Here we go. Bring us home.
Wait, where is it?
Number eight.
Oh, it's on there. Oh, I, I, I put a check mark too early. Uh, well, no, thank you. I'm excited about the donations that we have this evening. I'd like to take the next hour to talk about them if you don't mind.
Sorry, we have time.
Um, no, we have, we do have some very meaningful donations tonight because three of them are coming from um, the school, community, um, you know, the parent organizations. And I, I just love that we have been encouraging schools to talk to us about what their parents are providing and, and they're really doing a great job of sharing this with us. So our first one here from the San Pedro Elementary, the Dolphins. We've got the San Pedro PTA giving us two thousand dollars for student transportation on field trips. Uh, we heard, uh, Principal Hodgson talking earlier about the importance of field trips and that those field trips wouldn't happen without the, the community and the parents chipping in. And, and so thank you to San Pedro PTA. Um, also from Coleman Elementary, Home of the Tigers. We've got the PTO donating five thousand five hundred eighty-two and thirty-seven cents for copy paper.
Wait, wait, what?
Buses.
Okay, okay. That's a lot of copy paper.
So, uh, again, buses for field trips and just, you know, parents chipping in and helping out the office and, and paying for some of the copy paper that maybe goes to, um, some of the flyers that the PTO is putting out. So, um, very generous from the Tigers. Davidson Middle School PTO is donating one thousand eight hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents.
You didn't wanna say Home of the Cougars?
Home of the Cougars, yes. For the music department, field trip transportation. Um, huge shout out to the Davidson Middle School Music Program that just won, I think, I think all four of their programs won first place at the recent, um, I don't know, check social media, it's on there. Very, very proud of them, that's amazing. And then we have San Rafael High School, Home of the Bulldogs. We've got a donation of an acoustic guitar valued at two hundred dollars from Johanna LaFleur. Um, that's great for the music program and always helpful when folks, um, share their instruments with us. Total donation this evening, nine thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Uh, thank you very much for the generosity of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, so, uh, do I have a motion to approve these wonderful donations to our school?
Motion to enthusiastically approve all those donations.
Do I have a second motion?
Second.
Thank you, my trustee Radas. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved. And I think that that is everything for tonight. We do not have anything for readjustment from the closed session. So next regular meeting will be on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Anything I'm missing before I take up? Okay.